Like to call the order of the City Council, regular meeting of Monday, August 18th of the Palo Alto City Council. The Kirk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vinker.
Here.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames. Councilmember Lou.
Here.
Councilmember Rectal.
Here.
Mayor Lalling.
Here.
For the record, six present.
Thank you. So we start off tonight with a number of special orders for the day of the day. And the first one is a special order for a special person. And with a lot of enthusiasm, are honored to have our very own District 16 representative and leader from the House of Representatives. And without much more introduction, we're going to introduce him, except we're going to tell you, we're going to give you one of the things that politicians love most. More time than what you asked for. So we can go 10 or 15 because we moved out the last item of the agenda. So we have a little time. You don't have to though. You don't have to. That's up to you. So please come up to the podium and address this, introducing Sam McCarty.
Mayor, thank you for making some time in your very busy agenda. And thanks to all the members of the council. I know we've several of you I know put up with enough of me yesterday. And thank you for joining us at the League of Women Voters event, but I've had wonderful relationships with so many of you through the years. So thank you. And thank you for your service. I also want to particularly thank our city manager, Chikata, and his team. Shantel Cotton Gaines and Kylie Noce, who have been very helpful in facilitating my being here. And I want to congratulate in particular your fire chief, George Blackshire, sorry, excuse me, Geo Blackshire. For his 28 years of service to the community and congratulate him on his retirement. I understand that is something we'll be commemorating at some point today. On that subject, I wanted to let you know a little bit about what we're working on here. Great to see you, council member. A little bit of what we'll be working on. I know you all are very aware of the news, the grim news from the occupied territories of Washington DC. And happy to talk about any of the many issues related to, for example, budget bill that recently passed, which we know will have various severe impacts on our county, particularly with regard to delivery of healthcare. To so many of our of our families who struggle the most, food assistance, Pell Grants for our students here at Stanford and elsewhere throughout the county, San Jose State and elsewhere. And R and D investment in so many other ways. What I wanted to talk to you a little bit about were two local initiatives we'll be working on together collaboratively with you and with other cities. We recognize that while we are fighting many of the horrible decisions being made in Washington DC on a daily basis. We also want to be working collaboratively with our communities here to see how we can prepare for that moment. When there will be funding again for important priorities, when there will be opportunities. And of course, we know that the communities in this country, they're able to move most quickly when those opportunities arise for grant funding, for example. Are the communities that are ready, that have their environmental clearance, that have their permits, that have everything they need. And that's where we want to focus. So based on a lot of conversation I've had over the last several months. We identified two critical areas that we think we could play some useful purpose. As a federal office in convening and collaborating with our local communities. One is with regard to wildfire resilience. And the second is with regard to all the resilience on the coast side that's required for infrastructure that's desperately needed. Predominantly in San Mateo County, where our district extends for things like power and roads and lots of other necessities. So with regard with regard to the wildfire resilience effort, I think we're calling it. The wildfire resilience partnership. Or RAP. I guess if you add congressional to the beginning of that, then it becomes another word. In any event. We we think there's great opportunity here as a federal. Partner to be doing what we can to identify those unique regional projects or regional initiatives. Where a little federal money and maybe some assistance in getting through permitting and and environmental and so forth can help us be ready and more ready. And there's some amazing innovation that's happening, as you all know, with a wildfire council, Prevention Council and San Clara County Fire, and of course, your own department. Whether it's around detection with the deployment of sensors, partnership with Stanford and others. Or in mitigation. And certainly, we know that this all requires money. It requires partnership. So we have already reached out to your city. We look forward to partnering with you on that particular initiative. We will be devoting a lot of our staff time to this effort. And speaking of our team, I want to call out Nicholas, who is here. I think you may be familiar because Nicholas did great work for my predecessor and issue. I think Justin is Justin. Oh, there he is. Justin, yes, who many of you may know as well, also did great work with Anna and they were kind enough to hang around. So we've got some experienced folks who will be working in partnership with you and your team. And we look to launch this in the next two weeks. So more to come on these initiatives and I'd love to talk about whatever you're most concerned about. And I know there are many concerns. So thank you very much for the time.
Okay, great. We'll bring it to the dais if we have any. Questions for Congressman. Light up the board. Everybody's shy tonight?
They got their questions out yesterday.
Hi, I'll start by thanking you for being up here yesterday at the League of Women Voters event and then back again today. It's great to have you in Palo Alto so much. So along these same lines of, you know, funding right now is tough to come by. I think you know that in February and March, we actually passed a resolution responding to federal administration efforts. And one of the things we did in that resolution is we reaffirmed our commitment to climate action and the local authority to address it. And so it's one thing to not have the wind beneath our wings of the IRA and the dollars, but it's another thing if we get constrained. And one of the things I'm concerned about is the citing of data centers. Those aren't going to go away. There's going to be more and more interest in those. And one of the tools we have to keep them greener with all the energy demands is, you know, local land use regulation. I'm wondering if there's any of any thoughts on the outlook of whether the federal government is going to try to, you know, usurp some of those powers too. I think I'm a little. A little nervous after the Clean Air Act waiver revocation and, you know, keeping us from acting the way we would like to.
Yeah, you're right to be nervous. And I think we're going to see a lot of quote unquote permitting reform coming through both executive branch and and through Congress. And unfortunately, with a bias toward drill, baby, drill. We've already seen some changes in federal regulation two weeks ago, maybe a little longer proposed. That would make it even more difficult for industrial scale solar and wind. That has us all very deeply concerned. And so we know that there are economic, I should say, financial forces at work here. And we're going to do everything we can, working with those partners who are most interested financially in those data centers, meaning the tech companies. To emphasize the importance of renewables and storage, particularly since time is of the essence. And building out gas infrastructure is not the pathway to getting the data center up and running. If you're in a relatively remote area or a greenfield. So we think that there's an opportunity here to make a strong pitch. That if we're concerned about moving at the speed of business, that renewables will be their path. And we need to clear the obstacles for renewables first and foremost. But I appreciate the the passion and I think we'd love to continue working with you and I know partners at the National League and at the US Mayor's Conference to make that point.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Stone.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Congressman McCarty for being here. Always wonderful to hear from you. So I wasn't able to make yesterday's. Yesterday's town hall, but glad I'm not missing out now. Two, two questions. You know, I remember during the campaign, I remember you spoke a lot about finding ways to be able to work with all members of Congress. And lately I've been hearing about talks about possible, possible legislation regarding additional affordable housing funds or support. Can you give us any updates? I know that's an area that you really care about.
Yeah, if we think about housing. So I'm on the Financial Services Committee, which includes jurisdiction over many housing issues, which is good news for recovering mayor who cares about this stuff. There is, you know, there were maybe three bits of good news in the last budget bill that passed, not many, but three bits. One of them was. The expansion in the low income housing tax credit program with regard to the dollars. That could be allocated individual projects. So I think there will be some opportunity. And I would say that the committee I'm on is more collaborative than most. I know it's a low bar right now, but we have a pretty. Let's say collaborative chair and specifically the subcommittee chair over housing has also been very public about his desire to find opportunities to work on bills with Democrats. In fact, he's co-sponsoring two of of the bills that I've introduced on housing specifically. So I think there is opportunity now. Obviously, what I would love to see us to is get out there and, you know, quadruple the number of section eight vouchers. If we're really going to tackle our homelessness crisis, that's not the kind of change we're going to see. But I think we do have an opportunity at least to think about how we can eliminate barriers that may exist to building affordable housing. And. And focusing on housing supply. And by the way, going backward for a moment to vouchers, some very bad news. I think it was about a month ago, the administration announced they now want to place a two year restriction on the use of vouchers for what they call work. Able or able bodied recipients. So that is obviously going to be a massive challenge that we're going to have to work through, but and I will oppose. But just going to this issue about housing supply. So, you know, what I've been working on is trying to find those areas where. We might be able to get a few Republicans on board because that's the only way you're going to get a bill to move forward. The bill, three bills that we have, two which have been introduced and another will be introduced in about a week and a half. Are focused on, for example, limiting barriers to the CDBG program to allow cities more flexibility to use CDBG for affordable housing. And lift the caps there, some NIPo restrictions that were making it challenging on affordable housing construction. And then one that got some attention in the media here locally around empowering homeowners to become housing providers. Those who want to build backyard homes, but can't afford to do so and are having challenging challenges getting financing. We think there's real opportunity there if we get Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac involved in backing the second mortgages that can help homeowners be able to afford. Building the second units. And what we saw in in San Jose, you know, we tried to make it easier, as I know you have here in Palo Alto in different ways. And we created a mechanism for folks to be able to get a permit in a day online and use pre fabricated, pre fabricated, pre approved plans and so forth. And we saw a huge boost in in the number of permits that were issued. But we've discovered only about half the homeowners who got permits actually built anything. They just couldn't get financing. And so we think this could be a way to really unleash the potential for an awful lot of homeowners, even if they want to provide it for their own families. We know over time, that granny unit, if, you know, the team moves off and moves away and is no longer in the in the unit, ultimately can become affordable housing. So we think that's a promising path.
Thanks for that answer. Appreciate it. And then just one final question. I think this second Trump term has been so much worse than many of us anticipated. I think a lot of people, especially locally, are feeling a sense of hopelessness. What, what have you seen in in Washington lately that gives you hope for kind of a better few years?
As I told the members of your team, if you're asking me to spread the good news, that'll be challenging. But, you know, I think that is an important question and. Let me say this, if I could be partisan for a moment. The fact that people are out in the street is important because the rest of America sees. Their neighbors and they may not agree with them on lots of issues, but they see that other Americans are out there and that's really important. We are seeing the polling data reflect that. The latest poll I saw two days ago had approval rating at 38% for this president, disapproval at 60%. And in critical areas, particularly younger voters who went with Trump, we're seeing a really dramatic drop in support. And I think that's really important. And, you know, the internal politics that I'm hearing, you know, I have Republican colleagues who had big plans to go run for governor and so forth and have the White House say to them, no, we actually need you in Congress. Because they're pretty concerned about losing those seats. I mean, one example was Elise Stefanic, who was looking to become UN ambassador and then pulled back. Now she had won her seat by double digits for four consecutive elections. And so there's no reason to believe she, her seat was in peril, but obviously the White House had concerns. And now we're, of course, seeing this ridiculous redistricting initiative where they're literally drawing the maps in the White House for Texas. That reflects a desperation born of the reality that we are seeing, which is an immense frustration. With what people know about this horrible budget bill that passed, obviously it's going to have devastating impacts. We hope that as we start to see folks like Senator Josh Hawley, who expressed buyer's remorse only days after voting for the bill and introduced the bill to try to. To try to offset the horrible cuts to Medicaid. Which, you know, I won't comment on motives there, but I think we're going to see more buyers remorse to come. And we just have to be nimble about taking advantage of that buyer's remorse. And finding those who may have an opportunity to show some courage to step out. So I think. You know, democracy is at work in in one very important way. People are angry and they're showing it. And they're showing it at town halls, they're showing it out in the streets. And there are some folks getting shaky knees as a result. And I want to encourage that. In the meantime, we're going to continue to work with lots of great partners like Democracy Forward and Public Citizen. I'm part of a rapid response litigation team that has been very successful. Despite all the bad news we may be seeing in Supreme Court decisions and so forth, there's a lot of good news. More than 190 injunctions that have been issued by federal judges, both Democratic and Republican appointees, including several who are Trump appointees. Coming out halting executive action or limiting it in various ways. I know there's plenty of bad news to read, but I think there's plenty of good news too, and we should acknowledge it.
Okay, councilmembers, one question each, please.
Sorry, I'll limit my answers. A little long winded.
Congressman. So first. You know, your job and before that Congresswoman Esch's job is an incredibly demanding job. I mean, you're commuting from DC and then you get home. And then you work all weekend. And then you go back into the lion's den. And I just want to say how much we appreciate the dedication.
Thank you.
That you have and determination. So my question is around kind of the consequences of the severe budget cuts and what we're facing. In our county statewide and trickling down to our region and and us locally and us directly locally. And the concept that at least for the next four years. Facing these cuts, if our region doesn't step up. We're we're going to really suffer drastic cuts in in healthcare for those most in need. Our transit systems could go in a kind of a death spiral without additional support. And I just wondered if you could offer a few kind of comments to our region and our constituents about. Us needing to translate our frustration and our protests into additional action like this.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, Councilmember. And, you know, it. I can assure you, it gives me no joy as your elected representative in Washington to say you're on your own. But that's what Congress and this president have said very clearly. And as we think about the impacts, for example, the healthcare, which are devastating on the orders of a billion dollar hit to this county's. Health and hospital budget. We know, you know, you've probably seen the numbers nationally, it's going to increase healthcare costs for 22 million Americans, probably 15 million of whom will lose their healthcare unless we have some very serious corrective action. Obviously, the county has a measure. And we're looking, we're talking very actively with the county about their spending plan and so forth. And I think that's important. I think you probably know that the revenue from that measure is not going to compensate for the full billion dollar loss. It'll be about a third. But we recognize there's some essential critical programs that are. Look, there's going to be horrible things that will be cut already, or I should say essential programs will be cut already, but to the extent you can save any of them, you you certainly want to do that. And then I know you've been very much a leader on transit issues. And I expect we'll have a regional measure based on extraordinary amount of work that you've led and others in in counties throughout our our Bay Area. This is a time when, you know, Martin Luther King says, in the darkest nights, that the brightest of stars shine. I think this is time for local leadership to shine. So thank you to each one of you. For stepping up in in various ways that you have, the environment on housing and on transit and so many other ways. We're going to continue to need your leadership.
Councilmember Lou.
Thank you, Congressman, for being part of our community. Thank you also for supporting.
Thank you also for supporting Fire Station Four. So I know to stay tuned on the Wildfire Resilience Partnership. I'm excited about that. Can you talk more about your second piece, so Coastside Resilience? And whether we might be able to partner for our Baylands where we previously had a thread with Valley Water and the Armored Corps of Engineers to improve resilience there?
You know, I'd love to talk to you more, Councilmember Lou, offline about that. What we're trying to do in the Coastside, I mean, look, and you probably know the drill. For every federal office, you get a torrent of requests for community project funding. And you try to demonstrate that you love everybody in your district equally. And, you know, as a result, political decisions are made to ensure that we're being balanced and unbiased and all those things. But it's not necessarily the most strategic approach to how we can use scarce dollars to really move the needle to improve safety or transportation or any initiatives or concerns that we have. So we thought that through both of these initiatives, both the fire and the Coastside, was by convening the community, we can be more strategic and identify those priorities that have the greatest regional impact. On the other side of the peninsula, of course, we're not going to neglect, obviously, the other needs, particularly as we think about affordable housing, for example. We'll continue to be, try to be responsive. I think many of you know Eric Henshaw, who worked, did great work for Anna. He's continued to lead our efforts in Washington DC in identifying grant funding. And so where you have some ideas about where we can be pushing and prodding, we're happy to work with you. And Eric will probably have some ideas too. I recognize that this issue of resilience is everywhere in our community. We started with Coastside simply because those are communities which are uniquely without resources by virtue of the nature of, I mean, they're small towns and they just don't have the ability to tax in the same way.
Yeah, absolutely understand. Just am glad to learn more about the Coastside project and would love to stay in touch about Palo Alto needs.
Absolutely.
Councilman Rekhto.
Yeah, thank you for coming. I want to follow on. We have preventive managers, but we also have response. And I want to talk about FEMA. And FEMA is one thing that shouldn't be partisan, but it's become partisan.
Yeah.
And, you know, with climate change, we're going to see more flooding, we're going to see more droughts and wildfire. And we're just at the time that people are experiencing this, we're taking that help away. And this help, this help is greatly going to change their lives. So what can we do? Do we have any options apart from just local control, having our local FEMA, there are ways to work across the aisle in Washington?
You know, when those BRIC grants were cut, BRIC is the federal program. I won't remember exactly the acronym, what it stands for, but in any event, we had cuts in Menlo Park, we had a cut to an important program in Pacifica. It was encouraging to see Republicans, two Republicans in Congress stand up and say, wait a minute, these are important to us. Now, hasn't yet gotten through to the executive branch, but I think there's an opportunity here. And I think the opportunity is how we could work together, particularly through the advocacy organizations like US Mayor's Conference and National League, with enough local communities to say, this is not a red or blue issue. You know, in Miami, which is a Republican-led city, every week, their sewer system's being inundated with sea level rise. I think there are enough folks who recognize what's going on and the imperative of these investments. So we would be very happy to work with you and these organizations that can sort of marshal the purple front that we're going to need to be able to get this administration to recognize the imperative of these investments. Obviously, a lot more work to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you do for us in Washington. And we'll work as closely with you as you want to help in any way possible.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks to all of you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Forgive me.
Congressman, sorry. I pushed my, maybe the batteries out of my light, but I definitely wanted to, first of all, offer my gratitude. We're all so grateful for the role you're playing and proud to have you representing our district. What I wanted to speak to was the rise in the awareness of California's prominence as an economic and political force. We're hearing that annually we give approximately $83 billion more to the federal government than we receive, effectively subsidizing the states which are in the opposite position, typically red states, that are receiving more dollars from the feds than they're giving. And now we're seeing a plan being hatched to counteract the Texas gerrymandering effort, literally using our size as the state that is home to one in eight Americans to potentially put up roadblocks or steer ourselves in a more optimal direction. I'm wondering if you could give us a sense as to what that feels like as a member of the California delegation? And to what extent is it rhetoric and messaging? And to what extent is it a plan, a strategy for turning things around?
Yeah, a great question. So I am told, at least in the news today, that Texas legislators are back in Texas. So I expect that will move forward. It's not obvious to me that the White House is going to get all the seats they think they're going to get. I think there's been, what we're watching, for example, I'm a member of the Hispanic Caucus and we're seeing significant shifts. And as we look at the cross tabs of Latino voters who supported Trump and a significant upswing in dissatisfaction amid all the cruelty we've seen. And so I like to believe that they're overestimating the support that they have in some of those Texas districts they think they're going to get. Nonetheless, we know, look, this is obviously a corrupt effort to try to expand at a time when they know they're facing a real challenge in the midterm elections. California obviously has, based on what we've seen in this map, five seats that could similarly change hands in the other directions. It'll be up to the voters to decide. I am concerned that the Republicans have, in part because of their willingness to kowtow to the White House's demands, to Trump's demands, many more opportunities in other states. We look at Ohio, particularly Amelia Sykes's seat, Indiana, and Florida as likely next efforts and potentially other states as well. Now, there are other states, there are, look, in California, for example, New York, but because of the nature of their laws, they wouldn't be able to do anything until '28. So nobody pretends this is a game we want to play. This is a very undesirable response for all of us. But we know the stakes are incredibly high. And I can tell you, many of my colleagues have expressed repeatedly gratitude to Zolaufkin, who's leading the charge as the dean of our delegation, and to Speaker Emerita Pelosi and Pete Aguilar and others who have been leading this effort. Because they know that if we don't do it, they're going to just move faster on the other side. And so we're trying to at least get folks to take a step and slow down. And if we put enough Republican seats in play, then maybe some of those Republicans will then start to break with their leadership. And we might actually get a more sensible outcome in the end. I don't have hope right now. I mean, you've probably seen Kevin Kiley has a bill to try to prohibit mid-decade redistricting. I've looked at the language of that bill. I appreciate the, what could happen, but the language of the bill won't do exactly what we want it to do, which is really to ensure this kind of, which can't, cannot happen anymore. And so, you know, we're looking at other modifications, but the reality is we haven't yet seen Republicans step up in that way. We've heard some from Lawler in New York and others. We're going to continue to push and see if we can prod some Republicans to stand up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
With that great kickoff to the evening, we have our second special order, which is a proclamation honoring Young Tran for his service to the city of Palo Alto. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Lowing and City Council. I'm Holly Boyd, Assistant Director of Public Works. We're here tonight to celebrate the career and retirement of one of our longtime Public Works engineering employees, Young Tran. Young began his service to the city in 1992. In his 30-plus years, he has made contributions in many areas, as you will hear in the proclamation honoring his service, including most recently being the project manager for significant projects like Charleston-Arastodero Corridor, the Streets and Sidewalk Programs, and the Public Safety Building. We will miss Young's role as the go-to person on complicated construction project issues, knowledge of construction methods, and for thinking like a contractor. I have had the privilege of working with Young for nearly three decades. He is a wonderful colleague and friend. He is generous with his time and knowledge and has always been someone who thoughtfully and reliably looked out for the city's best interests. On behalf of Public Works, we wish Young many new adventures in his retirement. I would also like to acknowledge his family members who are here tonight, Young's wife Jenny and sons Brian and Jonathan. So with that introduction, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We have a proclamation to read here. And after that, love to have you come up and do photo ops. I got the large print edition tonight as opposed to the smaller print edition. So whereas Young Tran began his career with the city of Palo Alto as a power employee in February of 1992, has provided exemplary service through his 30-plus-year career in public works. And whereas Young Tran has enthusiastically served the citizens of Palo Alto, working entirely in the Public Works Department, Engineering Services Division for more than three decades, with his final position as senior engineer, managing the Streets and Sidewalks Work Group. And whereas Young played a critical role in the cleanup and repair projects after the 1998 San Francisco-Guito Creek flooding, including implementing improvements to Palo Alto Avenue, Page Mill Road, and many culvert and bridge repairs in Arastodero Preserve. And whereas Young designed the traffic signal and intersection improvements at San Antonio-Nita and Arastodero Road Gun High, project engineer for the design and construction of many capital projects, including Page Mill Foothill Intersection Expansion Improvements, Arastodero Gateway Facility, Embarcadero Bike Path, upgrades to the Art Center Audio-Visual System, and the renovation and expansion of the Rinconada Library. And whereas Young was instrumental in working on four of the 2014 Council Infrastructure Plan projects, including as project engineer for the design of Fire Station Three, project manager for construction of downtown parking guidance systems, Charleston-Arastodero Corridor and Public Safety Building. Wow. And whereas Young started and ended his career with the city of Palo Alto, working on and ultimately managing the street and sidewalk capital maintenance projects. He's repaved and replaced hundreds of miles of streets, concrete gutters, sidewalks, and curb ramps. Curb ramps. And whereas Young Tran has mentored and trained many new engineers during his career on city standards, construction methods, project management, and delivery, and the importance and integrity and honesty in public service. He isn't afraid to get his hands dirty and show the new engineers how the work should be done in the field. And whereas Young Tran is recognized by his peers and city staff for being professional, knowledgeable, dependable, and a team player. Now, therefore, I, Ed Lowing, Mayor of the city of Palo Alto, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby extend sincere appreciation to Young Tran for his dedication and excellent service rendered to our city, presented today, August 18, 2025. Come on up.
Dear Mayor Ed Lowing and councilmember, I've been to a few meetings, council meetings in my career here at the city of Palo Alto, but I've never had a chance to speak in front of council. But I promise it'll take less than an hour. So going through, sitting down there here and all this project, I think it's the right time for me to retire because I don't remember half of those projects I had worked on. So that said, I want to, I would like to take this opportunity to express that I am very grateful for the opportunity to serve the city and the support that my supervisor and my colleagues in the Public Works Department has given me. I would not have lasted this long without the support. So that said, I want to thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. Decades of service, that's just absolutely wonderful. Our next exciting special order of the day is to celebrate the Palo Alto Sutera Marathon runner and receiving the Neighbors Award annual report later, which was on here originally. But we're going to talk first about the winner of the marathon.
Thank you so much, council. It's a pleasure to be here again and to celebrate our wonderful relationship with Sushira. I know several council members and our city clerk have been able to visit and see their wonderful hospitality. I'd like to also greet them because it's early morning in Sutera right now and they're watching. So, Ohio, Gosaimas, Sutsuachi. Gosanka, Itidaki, Arigato, Gosaimasu. Thank you for joining us. Our relationship with Sushira, Japan goes back 30 years, beginning with our longstanding student exchange. We have a sister-city relationship with them for 15 years. And during that time, Sushira has generously hosted 11 marathon runners in the Kasuma, in the Kasumaguru Marathon. This year, I'd like to introduce this year's marathoner, Owen Bitinger. Owen is a longtime supporter of the Sushira Student Exchange Program. Both his students participated, both of his children participated in the exchange. His oldest son participated twice. And his oldest son, Owen, is now a student in Japan for a year. As a result, still continuing his studies of the Japanese language. Owen's wife Jenny was also involved, and this last year, they hosted chaperones in their home. So with that to tell you about his experience, Owen Bitinger.
And as much for the folks on, I'll raise that up a little bit, as much as for the folks in the video, I have a couple of slides that can be visualized. I don't know if you're able to see them on anything, but thanks, everyone, for being here. It's almost exactly four months to the day from when I did the marathon in April, which is good because I'm just beginning to not be sore anymore from the effort that we put in. But I appreciate the introduction and wanted just to give you a little bit of context about the relationship with Sujira and the experience of going over there to participate in the marathon this year. On the second slide, Sujira is Palo Alto's sister city. There's a mascot on the right side of the page, which is Sutsu Maru, which is Sujira's mascot. You'll notice the ears are reminiscent of bodice roots, which is one of the prominent crops in the area. It's a city that's just a little bit around, it's right about an hour north of the city of Tokyo. Palo Alto has been a sister city since 2009, and the exchange program has been in place since '93. And every year, one Palo Alton for the, one Palo Alton for the And every year, one Palo Alto, one Palo Alton for the last 11 years, I guess barring COVID, has participated in the marathon, which is a traditional marathon. And there's also a blind marathon that's run concurrently, which is some of the most amazing feats that you've ever seen when you see the marathons and their guides passing you as well. They're elite athletes running in tandem. So I wanted just to give everyone a little bit of context about, you know, where is Sutera, which is just north of Tokyo on Lake Kasumagara? And also, what is Sutera known for? And the next page has a few of the highlights of what they are famous for, whether it be the wooden fishing boats on the lake in a traditional fashion of fishing for ice fish. They have a Hanabi fireworks ceremony every September. I think it's in a couple of weeks. That's part of the All Japan Fireworks Competition. They have beautiful infrastructure around cycling. I'm a runner, but also a cyclist, and they've built out a massive infrastructure around the lake. And it's all lined by sakura trees, and I happened to be there during the sakura blossoms, which was great. And they're also known, as I mentioned, for the lotus roots, but also the lotus flowers, as well as one of the local enterprises where I had the opportunity to meet the patriarch of the Shiba numa soy sauce factory, which is in its 17th generation of operation, handcrafted wooden barrels, making soy sauce in Sutera since 1688. On the next page, just, you know, part of the experience going over, it's not just dropping in and running a marathon. It's really getting a chance to meet the town, meet the people, meet the government, and your counterparts in the area. And also, for me, it was a wonderful opportunity to meet the families that my children had stayed with when they came over to visit. So I had an opportunity to see a number of the sites in the city, whether it be the Ring Ring Road, whether it be Sutera Castle downtown, which was in the kind of the waning stages of the sakura blossoms, the tulips at the windmill at the lake park, as well as visiting the, you know, I think it's a 600 or 700-year-old temple and being taught how to meditate. They were very generous with me, that you usually would sit cross-legged to work on your meditation, but it was the day before I was running a marathon. So they gave me a chair because I think I wouldn't have been able to finish the marathon if I had managed to do that, as well as the massive Buddha in the neighboring town, which is significantly larger. And you could see it throughout the run. It's larger than the Statue of Liberty. So you can see it from way away. On the next page, just a couple of the highlights. I had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Ando and the Sutera City Leadership. I had the opportunity to meet with the International Association. Also had a chance to meet with Nakajima Sensei, who was a teacher who used to be based here in Palo Alto and is the founder of the exchange program. And also had a chance to visit the Junior High School, too, where the students put on an exhibition of all their activities. And I also had a chance to meet both the students who had, or three of the students who had come to Palo Alto as part of the exchange program in, I think, three or four weeks prior to my being there, as well as Endo Sensei, who, they're very small on this, but he had dinner at our house as he was part of the exchange group that came over. And he visited us and did lovely portraits of my two kids, who are now alumni of the program. I also had a chance, I won't go through all the names on the page, but I had the chance to actually be hosted by each of the families that hosted my kids. And it's really a highlight, highlights the hospitality that's offered by the folks in Sutera. It's a wonderfully giving community. And it was wonderful to be able to meet the families that my kids had really had an experience in middle school that kind of formed their interest. As was mentioned, my son's actually heading off to KO University for a year of study away from where he's currently at school, and he'll be there through July of next year. Lastly, I guess there's the marathon. It was daunting at the very start of the marathon. They gave me the number 502, and I was standing next to number 501, who is Yuki Kawuchi, who won the Boston Marathon in 2018. And it's very psychologically challenging to not run fast when you start with someone who's going to be going that fast next to you. And I was thinking, I wanted him about two minutes ahead of me at the first mile. And he was well more than that, actually, when he took off. But, and it was just, there was wonderful support throughout. And then lastly, on the last page, I'd like to put a massive thanks to the international exchange team. Kazawa-san, Ozeki-san, Onuki-san, Araki-san, Nakazumi-san, and also Fujimara-san, who helped me throughout every step of the way, was my translator. I can speak a very small amount of Japanese, but certainly would not have been able to get across. So thank you all for hearing this. It's a wonderful program. And I think in the spirit of some of the things that Congressman McCarty was talking about, the opportunity that we have to kind of expand our horizons and look outwards and not be like what's happening in some parts of Washington, much more nativist and looking inward is a great experience for everyone to have. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Oh, and thank you so much for representing Palo Alto in such a great way that you just documented keeping this tradition alive. And I also want to join Sarah Burgess in welcoming our friends who are up very late watching this on television. Great to have you participate that way and keep that close connection, even though I have a lot of miles between us right now.
Absolutely.
So thanks for doing all that, and of course, the neighbors abroad. But please come up and have some photos.
And also, Mayor Long, I have a gift to you, an omiagi from Mayor Ando that I'm going to bring up as well.
Great. Okay, I think that takes us away from all the fun stuff for tonight. And we're going to move on. And the next item of business is a closed session on two items. We'll take public comment on those items.
Our first speaker is Herb B.
Thank you, Mayor Lowing and councilmembers. On the item 4156 North California Avenue, I request and suggest that you don't go into closed session this evening, but instead continue the item to the next meeting with a direction to staff to do two things. The first is to add to the subject line in the agenda, the actual site addresses of the project. The project's not on North California Avenue, it's on California Avenue. And North California Avenue doesn't contain an address 156. The two streets are separated by, from each other by Alma Street and the Caltrain tracks. And North California Avenue is in the residential area on the Bayland side. And it only has three addresses in the 100 block, and none of them are 156. The project site is on two addresses. One is 156, actually 156, 158, and 164, which is generally one indicated as 156-164 California Avenue. And the other is the 2250 Park Boulevard. And it's on the California Avenue, which is on the foothill side of the Bayline and is in the California Avenue Business District. It's important to do that so that the public generally knows what you're talking about when there's an agenda item, description, and subject line, and that's not the case here. Second thing to do is to add in the agenda packet a copy of the June 27, 1995 letter that is referred to by the applicant. All we have is the applicant's comments on the letter, but the letter itself is not in the packet. And I checked online on Building I, and it's not there either. So it seems to me that that would be an appropriate thing to do. The applicant has consistently used the North California street as the address of the project and the applications and in all correspondence. I don't know whether it was intentional or they just don't know where, what the names of the streets are. And it's important because the applicant is criticizing the city for slow walking. The project deserves a builder's remedy, where there's some feeling that over time, staff was slow-walking, getting the certification for the comprehensive plan housing element, so that it could be as many buildings, remedy projects as possible. And in some sense, this applicant says, why not them too? Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on closed session items for NEA1.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes, I wonder if the city attorney could clarify whether there is an issue on the address of the closed session.
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. Appreciate the comments of the speaker. We will look more carefully at how we describe this project in the future. This isn't a quasi-judicial item that requires an exact assessor's parcel level type of notice, and the notice is sufficient for the public to be aware of what the item is, so council can proceed tonight. Thank you.
Any motion to go into closed session, please?
Second.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Rechtal?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lifcott-Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
As always in closed sessions, we can't really give a specific as to when it will be out, estimating about 90 minutes or longer. Uh estimating about uh ninety minutes or or longer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we good to go, City Clerk?
Okay, great. We are back from our two closed session items and there is no reportable action. So we'll move ahead with our regular agenda. And the first item is agenda changes, additions and deletions.
That's for me. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do have a couple of changes to note. In particular, one recognizing as is obvious, the City Council added an item on closed session, which has put us back significantly on our time tonight. We, staff is recommending deferral of item number 16, which is the action item scheduled this evening on the Director's zoning interpretation. Want to note that this is a staff recommendation that the appellant agrees with to postpone this item to September 15th. We would note though, that the app, appellant has reiterated their eagerness for that item to be heard. So again, September 15th would be the new date for that item. In addition, I want to note on your consent calendar, the staff would like to withdraw number seven. This is related to Ramona Street for some additional staff work. And those are the two changes on the agenda for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll go to general public comment on items not on the agenda.
We have 10 requests to speak.
Oh my gosh. I think we have to go down to two minutes each.
Our first speaker is David P. David P. Moving to Raj T.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. I'm Raj Tila, a local entrepreneur and a Stanford grad working with local restaurants on their outdoor dining operations. We've seen a lot of technologies get adopted in parklets in San Francisco and many other counties accelerating public safety and electrification. These technologies have made these parklets safe from the dangers of propane while improving community health by providing proper comfort while getting rid of air pollutants emitted from gas based heaters. As a Stanford grad who has invested in Palo Alto, I'd love to see Palo Alto remain at the leading edge of innovation as it always has been. Thank you all.
Our next speaker is Arlena A., followed by Sabrina L.
Hi, my boys were age two and four. When they lost to they considered a big brother to suicide on the tracks. My sons My sons are now thirteen and fifteen. And while progress has been made, we have a very personal marker of how little when it comes to the most basic and effective strategy eliminating means. Our burden is the tracks. That is our fully accessible means, as we have been reminded on average of almost once a month this year alone. We maintain our readily accessible means at a time when the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, and the Children's Hospital Association have all declared a national emergency in child and adolescent mental health, with suicide being the second-leading cause of death among youth. It is in your power to take critical steps now to limit access to our lethal means. Ultimately, the grade-level access must be gone, but in the meantime, there are proven measures to restrict access. We have fenced the west side but left the east side porous. Federal funds exist for local projects. If you haven't already, please dedicate a city employee to actively pursue and report back about obtaining federal funding, so it's an organized, ongoing, and top priority. That person should also take an active role in the monthly Caltrain Safety Team meetings. Many of you know that last year, concrete solutions to reduce suicide at train tracks were published in a peer-reviewed scientific journal. I couldn't bear to ask the author how she feels about other jurisdictions implementing these evidence-based recommendations, while her community, she was a gun student, has not. My sophomore responded to this month's tragic news of his schoolmate's death by declaring, "The police have Rivians. We have enough money." I answered his frustration with the "adults know better" dear lines about how it's complicating, that funding comes from different pots, blah, blah. But he knows, as well as we all do, that it has just not been our collective priority. I look forward to speaking differently to our youth soon about the concrete steps the City Council is taking. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sabrina L., followed by Debbie M.
Hi, good evening. It's, my comments are a little bit more trivial, I guess, compared to the speaker before me. I was recently sent an email to invite me to a survey from the Palo Alto Bike Commission about eight possible Alma Street crossings for bicycles. And I have two suggestions on that. I was asked, in this survey, I was asked on my opinion on each one of those options, as well as rank order the eight relative to each other. So my, I have two suggestions. One suggestion is that I think that the overall context could be added to these surveys. For example, grade separation plans with respect to bike crossing changes and so forth. Because having that context may change people's rank orderings and opinions. And second of all, I, I do hope that the bike, any bike crossings plans will be considered in conjunction with overall traffic plans versus independently. And maybe that's just my perception based on the survey. Maybe these are all coordinated, but it just was not that clear to me. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Debbie M., followed by Carol G.
My name is Debbie Mukamal, and I, and my daughter is a senior at Gunn High School and a graduate of Aloney and Fletcher Schools. I am eager to learn what the city is doing to protect our young people from the dangers of the trains, particularly in the wake of last week's tragic passing of another one of our community members. A recent New York Times article described what we know about suicide. I quote, "It turns out that blocking access to a single lethal means, if it is the right one, can make a huge difference. As you know, the train tracks are the single lethal means in our community. I am aware that the school district and city have current and proposed initiatives to address the mental health needs of our young people. Thank you. But it is time for a permanent solution to the lethal means, including elevating the trains despite how costly it may be. Please stop discussing and get to citywide implementation. We cannot afford to wait to address this crisis one more day. If you haven't already, assign a staff member whose responsibility it is to stay on this issue. In the past, the city used human watchers, volunteers, and professionals. Get the track watchers back online now until a permanent solution can be adopted and act other best practices that can help in the short term, like camera monitoring and fencing. Preventive measures must be taken today, not tomorrow. Six years ago, my closest cousin's teen daughter died by suicide. I have seen firsthand the devastation that comes from this kind of tragedy. Please do everything you can to ensure our community doesn't lose another precious life."
Our next speaker is Carol G., followed by Tom H.
Greetings, Palo Alto City Council members and my fellow Palo Altans. My name is Carol Garston, and I'm the founder and producer of Third Thursday California Avenue Monthly Year- Round Music Festival. I'm thrilled to tell you about this month's event. It's this week, Third Thursday, August twenty-first, and it's a foodie walk. It's really exciting because it's going to be featuring yummy bites from fifteen-plus Calav restaurants. Tickets are sixty dollars. There will also be beer and wine for sale and three fabulous bands, Past Curfew, Whiskey Hillbillies, and The Theros Ensemble. All proceeds from the foodie walk support Vista Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired and the Third Thursday Music Festival. If you don't want to buy a ticket, no problem. Third Thursday is always free, and everyone is welcome. Thank you to our sponsors, the City of Palo Alto, Stanford Research Park, and to our fiscal sponsor, the Chamber Foundation. We'll see you all on Calav this Thursday, August twenty-first, from five to nine p.m. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom H., followed by Noel S.
My name is Tom Haxson, and I'm the president of the Palo Alto Middle School Athletics Community Organization, a local nonprofit founded to improve how middle school sports are managed in Palo Alto School District. Last year, we operated a cross-country team for JLS Middle School that offered students a significantly better experience than the city's program had previously provided. We did this by investing directly in coaching and team support rather than unnecessary overhead. As a result, we reduced a portion of registration fees on overhead from two hundred and five dollars per student to less than one dollar, while lowering total registration fees from three hundred and thirty-five dollars to two hundred dollars. Our success and advocacy helped encourage this council to vote unanimously last October to evaluate transferring the management of middle school sports to local nonprofits like ours. We appreciate that this evaluation has begun, but nearly a year later, it remains unfinished. In the meantime, we are again operating a JLS cross-country team this season, following a survey in which returning students overwhelmingly asked us to continue. We asked the City Parks and Recreation Department to allow our team to participate in league meets. Specifically, we proposed a simple solution. Allow all JLS cross-country runners, whether from our program or the city's, to compete under a single combined JLS team name. This would be very easy to implement. At cross-country meets, runners from multiple schools compete together in one race, and the team name simply appears next to each runner's name in the posted results. Our proposal is to simply list all JLS runners as competing for JLS. This arrangement would benefit students in both programs, and it would support a nonprofit that the city is evaluating as a potential partner. Unfortunately, the Parks and Recreation Department denied our request without citing any specific concerns. I would welcome the opportunity to discuss this with council members interested in helping the city find a solution that serves the best interest of students. If you're open to a conversation, please email me at tomhaxson@gmail.com. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Noel S., followed by Jamie S.
There's a new New York Times bestseller called "One Day Everyone Will Have Always Been Against This", and it's really relevant because we're finding that supporting or even pretending to ignore Israel's genocide in Gaza is slowly becoming unfashionable in America, most particularly in the Democratic Party. Only eight percent of Americans, excuse me, of Democrats polled continue to support the genocide. Forty-three percent of Americans, including sixty-five percent of Democrats, are now calling it a genocide. Among adults under thirty, it's fifty-four percent. You saw probably that twenty-seven Democratic senators voted to block arms sales to Israel. We now have thirty-four congressmen sponsoring the Block the Bombs bill, and we're waiting for Congressman Licardo to sign on to that. House Minority Whip Catherine Clark recently characterized the Gaza War as a genocide in a speech last week. Even the Iowa City Council, Progressive Iowa City, passed a boycott resolution this month, and the mayor emphatically stated that this is a genocide. We've been begging you for just a ceasefire resolution for more than a year, and you've been ignoring us. The tide is turning, and I think you all have a question to ask yourselves. Do you want to be the last one to come out against this genocide? I hope you won't be the last one. And I think if you really look at what's going on, we have a nation. Israel is drunk with anger, drunk with grief, drunk with rage, drunk with racism. What do you do with a drunk? You take away their car keys. If you don't take away the weapons, Israel will continue to dig a deeper hole for itself and for the Jewish people. Because so many groups that call themselves Jewish are actually Zionists and are defending Israel and defending this mayhem. For the sake of Israel, for the sake of America, for the sake of the Palestinians, for the sake of the Jewish people, I hope you'll pass a resolution, not only for a ceasefire, but for a full arms embargo. Take away the keys to the car, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamie S., followed by Afram.
Hello, my name is Jamie Schall. I'm the mother of twins who are just starting tenth grade at Gunn High School. They just started last Thursday, and I had to have a conversation with them that morning explaining that one of their friends that they got to know in the production of Hades Town last year took their own life at the train tracks. And so I'm asking our mayor and this council to please take some sort of action to make it, to take that one lethal way away from these kids. Give them a chance. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Afram.
So Keith, I wanted to ask you a few questions. One, I'd like to know, and I don't expect to get the answer tonight, whether you're a Zionist, and more importantly, whether you've been making weapons that you knew or should have known have been used against the Palestinian people during your decades with Lockheed Martin. You know, I was really offended by your statement to the Daily Post. To me, let's, let's put it this way. The quote was, "The city needs to come up with rules that prevent neighborhoods from being overrun and also to prevent undesirable behavior by RV dwellers." You know, Justice Musk, thirty-seven years on the California Supreme Court in Tubi versus the City of Santa Ana in nineteen ninety-five. By the way, a nice Jewish man like myself and like you, Keith, said the following. "The city cannot solve its homeless problem simply by exiling a large number of its homeless citizens to neighboring localities." Why don't you get a grip and talk to the person sitting next to you, Julie Scott Haynes, who goes out and talks to the people that are living in the RVs? Get their narrative before you start to demonize them through your language. I get it. It's kind of like a Zionist state of mind, you know? You want to kind of start thinking about cleansing folks from our city before you, you know, like, like, you know, like, like the Palestinians should be cleansed from Gaza. Well, now you're going to go after the most vulnerable people without talking to them, without having a discussion with them about, not before you find out what their life is all about. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember questions, comments, and announcements? If any councilmembers have any, please apply your light. Okay, there are. Okay, go ahead. Vice Mayor?
Let's have a couple of things. One is that I wanted to congratulate Julia Zeitlin and the Palo Alto Student Climate Coalition on putting together a really terrific Extreme Heat Summit this past weekend and putting together a whole Cool Cities Coalition. It was held in East Palo Alto after the project last year, where our city, Menlo Park, and East Palo Alto data was collected about heat islands and where they occur, what the demographics are, where they occur. And she did a really terrific presentation there, as did her student colleagues. I was privileged to be on the panel there with, along with Dr. Depodkar from the San Mateo County Director of, she was, is the San Mateo County Director of Emergency Management, with Camille Lang, who's of Climate Resilient Communities, and Davina Hurt, who it does say is former mayor of Belmont, but she's also the former chair of the Air District, and it was great to have her there. But really, it was quite a remarkable performance on behalf of the youth in this community who really get this issue and are not just talking, they're actually walking the walk. So just wanted to commend them on a great event. And my second comment is, does anyone know where my water pitcher went? That's it. I want it noted for the record that my colleague took it. And that he's willing to share. Thank you.
Okay, any others? All right. No, that was you. That was not me. All right.
Okay, Julie. I'll blame my jet lag, just back from the UK yesterday, slow on the uptake. It's my first meeting back since we reconvened from our break. And I just wanted to acknowledge the two local events related to expressing our First Amendment rights and convening as people in the face of really problematic policy changes and behaviors on the part of our federal administration. So there was a local democracy fair preceded by a march from Town and Country all the way down to Rinconada Park with thousands of people. And then there was a lovely Good Trouble gathering protest rally right out here outside of City Hall. I saw colleagues at both events. I was there, obviously, myself. And just want to commend our community for coming out and showing up. And, you know, we had our congressman here today talking about what things are like from his perspective and how important it is that people get active at the local level. And it's just wonderful to see so many members of our community, both Palo Altans and the broader community, doing exactly that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go to our study session now, item five, which we've entitled "Productivity of Council Meetings for the Second Half of 2025." So let me just give an intro to that. We want to talk overall about the productivity of our meetings here in the, in the second half. And that's not just how do we spend less time sitting up here in the evening, although it includes that. It really is, the idea is to try to figure out the best way that we can work on the correct high-priority and high-impact items, particularly when we're freshest in the, in the day or in the evening as well. So we're, we're beginning our second half. In fact, at the end of the first half of the season, I said, of the season, yeah. I said, they were at halftime now. And if we were a football team or a basketball team, we'd go into the locker room and, and have a discussion about how could we do things better? What did we do right? If it's on time, it's great. Could I go out in the next half and do the exact same thing? If we need corrections, we made corrections. We don't have quite that approach because our locker room is where we're sitting right now. We have to be public with all of these discussions according to the, to the rules and regulations of Brown Act and transparency. So that's what I want to do tonight. And so for any of the public left, spoiler alert, this is not going to be too entertaining because it's nuts and bolts of, you know, what we, what we might want to do. So all I really want to do tonight, and what we had set out as about forty-five minutes, we could go- we could go maybe an hour at max, is to just vet some of the issues that all seven of us think might be an improvement, if there are any. And I'm not assuming that there's a lot wrong here or that we have any sort of big crisis here. I'm just trying to, you know, take a little break at halftime. And I think that if we make some progress on this and make some decisions tonight, that's fine. But we can also just schedule a second meeting at any time. So tonight is really just a check-in. And I want to also reiterate that I don't see this as any sort of first step in redoing the whole handbook. That's not the goal at all. So we don't have to have another ad hoc committee created for that. So that's kind of the overall. Hey, did you pass out those datas? I did, as one data point on meeting productivity, had our analytical staff called May and her staff just go back and look at some of our prior meetings to see how we're doing on just on various data points, which are there. And then we'll get on to some more maybe interesting suggestions. And there's probably too much data here to look at, but if you look at sort of the average meeting length, which is that center table there, I first went and did the last four years just to see the kind of progress that we're making on any of these stats. And then I took a data point just much further back, just to have a data point to compare. And so the average meeting length, as you can see, has been going in the right direction, not by a, you know, by a ton, but by a little bit in the last, in the last couple of years. And then I think what's maybe even more important is the next two, next two are that these are meetings that ended after 11:00 PM. And you can see that we've made really quite good progress on that in the last two years. This year, half a year is nine and eight. And then if you go to after 11:30, this year there's only been one and the previous year only three. So in terms of trying to get out of here where we can still talk and think, I think we've made some progress on that. And then we also have average end time and median end time. So just wanted to give this as one indicator. We took out, as the note says here, the priority setting retreats, those are not naturals. And each year we have some interviews with commissioners and those are usually shorter. And, but they're all sort of sprinkled in there the same way, so that shouldn't shift anything. I would note that, you know, we didn't scrub every one of these data points and discovered today that in '24, there were three or four meetings that actually started at four. So if that was the case, then that meant that they would have been slightly later if we had calculated that. But plus or minus, this is just where we are. So I think it's a good trend and we've all been trying to contribute to that. And I think we'd want to kind of stay with that. I'm just going to go through here and if, after I finish, you want to go comment on that, you can do that. But as I say, I just wanted that to be an indicator. So I just want to start off with a couple of suggestions. I use the phrase at the beginning of the year for these meetings as concise is nice. And I'll use that again. We can always just say, yep, I agree with the last two people, I'm done. And I just wanted to remind folks that we have this five-minute timer. And I want to remind folks that that's the maximum amount, not the minimum amount. So when you're ready to talk, you don't have to use all five minutes. And then the other thing I want to point out is that, you know, a lot of the efficiency of meetings is dependent on agenda planning, which is the mayor and the vice mayor. And that's where most of that responsibility lies. And the goal is to get things that are, you know, most valuable to the public upfront when they're still awake. And also those that require, that have the biggest impact upfront where we can get the most public comment and then carry on to work through those in an expeditious but awake, alert fashion. And then the last one I'm going to talk about right now is that I hope we continue to trust our committee work, you know, our standing committees and our ad hoc committees, now Brown acted, of course. You know, we all do a lot of hard work in those and a lot of detailed work that doesn't come to the dais. And to the extent that we can trust those recommendations, particularly when they're unanimous, we can benefit from their judgment and their work and just kind of go with them on consent. There's plenty of good reasons to pull things off of consent, but I just hope they're good reasons. Otherwise, we're going to have to obviously agendize them. And we have to follow the right protocols. And those protocols, as we know, are informing the city manager by Sunday noon if we're going to do any polls. And the last three did not follow that protocol to the letter. So we know that that's for planning the outcomes even that night. So I want to stop there so I can give a lot of people, your time, I want to come back to one more thing at the end that I want to make a suggestion on. So other folks that want to chat? Councilor Lethkott-Haines, your light is still on, so he can call you first if you like.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Councilor Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think I did challenge you when I handed the gavel over to beat me on the average end times. And so you got me by a minute, but there's a lot of season left to play.
That never even crossed my mind.
I want you to beat me though, so I'm here to help. I mean, I agree with everything that the mayor just said. An observation I've always had is, I think we are very capable of being efficient when we need to. It seems like once the clock ticks past 10:00 PM, all of a sudden we start to become concise, like you talked about. And we have, we are able to say, I agree with Councilmember Rectal or Councilmember Lou and move forward. We all serve on regional bodies and we see how other bodies are able to be much more efficient with very large agendas and important issues to get through. So I think ultimately, at the end of the day, it's on us to be able to do this. But clearly, the amount of work is not lessening. And it seems like we're getting more and more work and we need to get more and more done for the people. And really, the only way to do that as a part-time council is to improve our own efficiencies. And I think we can do that. So it's a part of it, I think, is just maybe a cultural change for all of us, which is hard because this has always kind of been the Palo Alto way, that we have very long meetings and we all feel like we need to kind of weigh in on every item. I think it'd be great if we could all kind of challenge each other to try to do exactly what the mayor was just talking about. And then maybe, you know, a thought for the future is kind of reexamining the order of our agendas to get more important things upfront because we do tend to, I think it's very common for the first hour, hour and a half to go by, and we've just kind of gone through a lot of housekeeping items that aren't substantive. I think we're really doing a disservice to the public and ourselves when we're leaving really important items until 8:00, 9:00 PM. So, and I'm open to that, to having that discussion sometime. Those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Others? Councilor Lou?
Thank you, and I'm glad we could have this conversation. So just a few takes on discussion efficiency. I would wonder what people's experiences are if we start more conversations with emotion or start more conversations with discussions on the staff motion. We can go sometimes, certainly we don't want to curtail any time for questions or understanding, but then sometimes we can go full round or round and a half or two of overall comments and how we feel overall before we get to the motion. And I think we can maybe skip straight to the motion in some of those conversations, but curious what other people's takes are. And I think to some extent, that kind of attitude could also help with non-action items. Just, we've all seen times where, coming out of a study session, we later say, actually, that's not what I thought. We got to have a study session later on the dais, for example. And if we start with the mentality that we are, we have a specific motion or we're working from the text from the beginning, that might be, might be a tactic to address that. I would also love any, to Councilmember Stone's point, any kind of little efficiency we can carve out, whether it's more voice votes, whether it's, I don't know, something that how would you roll call something. It actually makes a difference, especially when you fan that out across all of our boards and committees and commissions. But also on a more substantive point, I think there's also something to how productive we can be on the items that staff brings to us and how we process those. So a lot of that is on us and how we handle the priority studies in this meeting for the next year. But for example, we are treating Ramona, Calav, and University and Parklets overall as separate work streams. And I think as we saw from this item that we did not hear, but that I otherwise would have pulled, that that's not really the most effective use of time. I think obviously they are different places and we want our Parklets to be the best in their context. But there's got to be some kind of common framework that we can start from, like fees or intrusions into neighboring lot lines or roofs or something like that. And then the fine tuning on aesthetics and things like that we can refine or maybe make some larger carve-outs from, but like it's possible to start from the common baseline. I think the example of the place where we have been able to merge some of those conversations were, for example, when we talked about some ADU ordinances, we noticed that our housing element commitment to do some SB9 ordinances were very similar. It was all about objective standards for projects on a single-family lot that were 1,200 square feet. And so we said, this is very similar work and directly agreed. And so we'll have a faster update on an ADU ordinance, for example. Like I think there are opportunities like that that we could think about, that staff should really be thinking about so we don't give conflicting feedback, we don't have to pull things as often. So yeah, those are my two points. Some suggestions on potential discussion efficiency and some suggestions on simplifying our work streams to consolidate them.
Hi, Rebecca.
Yeah. You know, one of the things I love about being on this council is that I think it's a very strong council right now. I literally think that all seven of us are here for the right reasons. I think that this is a group where, to a person, we are smart, committed, and curious. And that's great, but we're also sometimes skeptical because we're smart, committed, and curious. And we're just, we just need to make choices and not drill down on everything. And that's hard, but it really boils down to priorities. And we have to ask ourselves, you know, what items are most in need of our attention and action, even if they're hard or unpleasant, and what items are more properly delegated, even if they'd be fun or high-profile? So, you know, we're never going to know everything about any item, really. But I think trying to keep in mind, and I, you know, don't always do this either, and I'm going to try to hold myself to it more, what do we really need to know about an item to make a responsible, informed decision? We do owe our community that, and so I'm not at all saying we shouldn't drill down on those things. But I think we could be a little more selective sometimes. And just to follow up on a couple of things that have been mentioned. One, pulling items. Just, it struck me last week at Policy and Services where we were going over some audit bill realignment. The pulling things has a cost. It has an opportunity cost, first of all, in terms of staff and council time because if we're doing those items, we're not doing something else. But it also has an actual cost sometimes. So for example, last week, our auditor added on a dollar figure to redo an audit that was pulled. So that could be perfectly appropriate, but I just wanted to point it out, this isn't, there are ripple effects to what we do for, no matter what we do. And, you know, certainly if we think the impending action is wrong or that the whole council should make the decision, those are good reasons to pull things. But, and I think, you know, big agenda, big dollar items, things of significant policy that are of interest to a significant group of residents should come to everybody. But I think, other than that, we really do need to honor the committee system that the mayor spoke about and not redo it without good reason. Otherwise, we should not have committees because then we just do things twice. So, and I do think that if there's interest in pulling something to get a related topic agendized, that it's better to go to the city manager, the city clerk, or the mayor and find out, is this thing coming anyway? Or is there some other, you know, could we get this on the agenda? And I wanted to remind all of us that, I don't remember the date, but coming up this fall, PNS will be taking up the referral to consider, are there other ways, additional ways that council members can get things on agenda? So that'll be something that we can all talk about and take advantage of going forward. But, you know, committees, commissions, commissions are not, I mean, we're a body of general jurisdictions. It's getting late. Commissions are bodies with particular expertise or at least a narrower bandwidth, even if they're not all subject to expert requirements. And they get to drill down deeper. They get to do some of that stuff we might want to do. And I think that really respecting that, those efforts is something that, you know, I will try to remind myself of, and I think we all could, that would be helpful. So I think, you know, just reflecting on that and seeing what we can each do so that we can work smarter and really hit all the priorities that sometimes we want to get to sooner and when people don't have to wait so long before their item comes up. So I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for raising this so we can have a little self, a little halftime chalk talk. And, you know, appreciate it.
Put in some new plays if necessary. Councilor Rectal?
Yeah, first I want to talk about pulling items and I plead guilty. When you get your dinner, you start with the steak and then you move on to the broccoli. And the consent calendar is kind of like the broccoli, right? You dive into the more important stuff first. And so I don't get to the consent calendar till the weekend and then it's like, oh, I want to pull this. And it's going to be mad at me again, but... So I think I have to start eating my broccoli first and then move on to the steak. So, yeah. So that's certainly a room for improvement. Closed sessions kind of break up the night. And can we move the closed sessions to the end? I always feel sorry for the public commenters who sit out there. They have to sit there and wait and it can be a half hour, it can be an hour, you don't know. And so if you want to speak about something, you have no choice but to sit there and twiddle your thumbs and doom scroll for an hour and a half while you're waiting for the council to come out. So I think that would be a good thing. If, at minimum, the general public comment have that before we go in, I think that would be a good thing. Just, you know, people have better things to do than sit around and wait for us. And similarly, if we have, like, we had a couple of items where we had a whole bunch of people here and we got to the end of the night and ran out of time and we send them home and they had to come back the next week. And that's just kind of rude. So I know it's hard because there's a lot of competing interests to be first in line. But if the ones where we know we're going to have public speakers, we should try and pull those early if we can, just so they don't have to sit around all night. And then they also have the risk then of being called back. And then the last thing is study sessions. Quite often, sessions come through and someone has a good idea and I think it's so obvious that's a good idea, I don't echo it. And we really should, on important stuff, take a straw poll or at least make sure, say me too on that because otherwise staff is sitting here to think, is this just one oddball who has this idea? Or do all seven oddballs have this idea? So either have a formal straw poll, we started doing that at PTC, I thought it worked pretty well, on study sessions, to do a straw poll to express interest when there was some type of pivotal opinion expressed or at least just say me too whenever possible.
Thank you for those. Councilor Lethkott-Haines?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate that you brought this forward. I think it's an important conversation for us to have. Love the data. I find myself asking other questions, really curious to, if we could figure out without too much trouble, you know, what have we accomplished in these meetings? How many votes took place in the timeframe expected versus got deferred for some reason? How many? For some reason, how many consent items were pulled? And, you know, what is the delay then for that item to come back? I'd be curious about our efficiency. Asking the greater, the larger question, what is our goal? Are we going for thoroughness on every item? Are we going for efficiency? What do we really consider our wins at the end of the season? You know, what can we as a council do to cut into the red tape that is perceived to be part of this Palo Alto process thing? What role are we playing and how can we be more accountable to, to the public ultimately? To get, get more stuff done quicker, more efficiently, hopefully at less expense. To Councilmember Rectal's point about the closed session and the public sitting here. I really feel that I feel so badly when we come out and there are people waiting, particularly if we end up deferring the item. At the same time, I know that closed session is when council tends to eat dinner. And so if you push that till eight or nine PM, you're going to have some tummies grumbling up here. Might be grumpy people. So we don't want that. And also those legal issues are what we're confronting back there and we need fresh minds. And, you know, I think frankly, there's nothing that we take up that deserves, you know, the least amount of our attention. So whatever we put toward the backend, we're implicitly saying, ah, this doesn't matter as much. It doesn't matter if they're not very awake. It doesn't matter, you know? And, and so I think it's really the duration of meetings overall that, that is the, is the enemy here. And I think for that reason, these efforts to pull fewer things, be tighter with our clock, could really help us kind of achieve those efficiencies and, and get more stuff done. And I, I know I talk a lot, I'm talking a lot now. Certainly I'm taking to heart whatever I can in terms of my own behaviors. I know that I have been a little slow to get to my packet, not getting to it until the weekend and therefore not in a position to tell the city manager that I might be concerned about something. I never mean that as disrespect of the process. And I'm just acknowledging this out loud to say to myself and to my colleagues, I'm going to get better at that so that I'm not contributing to any last minute polls. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Burt.
Yeah, I largely concur with my colleague's comments. Couple other thoughts. One is that something I've suggested for several years and we've never done. And maybe Policy and Services Committee can take this up. But over the course of each year, there is a rough pattern to the concentration of items that we get. And we seem to rediscover that every year as opposed to saying that this is the way it typically is and then anticipate it and, and try to accommodate it. So for instance, before we go on vacation, we have a combination of all the budget stuff and a whole bunch of other stuff that gets jammed in there. And those are often among our, a month and a half of our longest meetings. So looking at what things might be able to, are non urgent that can be put over until after vacation, which interestingly, at vacation, we, you'd think, well, things got stacked up and then they're really going to take off when we get back. That's typically not the case. And so move some of those to fill that, including other study sessions or whatever. Just to note, because of, we didn't have a, a meeting on August 4th, we're not going to have one on the 25th. We're not going to have one on Labor Day. We'll go two and a half months with two meetings. And yet we were totally jammed up in the spring. So I think that annual calendar could, could help us some. Another kind of best practice I've observed over the years that helps, you know, none of these things are black and white is when we go into really substantive action items for the mayor to frame at the beginning. Hey folks, here's what are the essential decisions with points we have to come to. So be thinking about that. Then often partway through, if we're kind of getting sidetracked, to remind us of that and to encourage a motion to come forward. We don't have to hear every possible comment before we go to a motion. So that, that's another practice. And, and then, you know, we, we all have our, our different political views, whether they're political on local issues or beyond, just to remind ourselves to try to minimize that and focus on the substance of the decision. And, and it doesn't mean we won't ever make any of those statements, but to just be conscious of trying to minimize that. Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to, Councilmember Burt, with respect to your first item, the annual calendar. My computer is kind of fritzing out right now, but I believe that's coming to Policy and Services in the next couple of months. So I think it was actually your suggestion that was the referral that's now getting to PNS. So, so we should be doing that.
Okay, I wanted to, since we've all been through a round and it was a very efficient round, let me say. I want to make one actual suggestion, but then I want to turn this back over to the other side of the partnership and having efficient meetings and have Mr. Scott have his, have his oar on it. But I've talked with him about what I'm supposed, what I'm about to, to talk about as, as well as the Vice Mayor. We're right now have just developed a protocol that we have three meetings. Well, we're required to have two by charter versus three, three, that's right, three by charter. And then we have the fourth backup on the fourth Monday. And we all keep that, that fourth Monday open because almost all the time we're having a, we're having a meeting there. But sometimes we don't. And then we all of a sudden have another week and think, oh, well, this is good. We don't have it, but our plans are already in place for whatever that is. So I, I like to suggest that we look at that fourth optional meeting if we have to have it as the, the right date for that is being the third Wednesday of the month instead of the fourth Monday. So the idea is that in that, for discussion purposes, that for that meeting, that, sorry, for that week, you would actually have two meetings. So it would be a busy week. One would be on Monday and one would be on Wednesday. But then you would know in advance that you're not going to have one that fourth Monday. So to know that one week a month, you wouldn't be doing any packet, I think would help council productivity in general because it would have more, more sort of time. And as a footnote, you know, if you want to travel more than five or six days right now, you don't do that except in July. So that was my idea and it works okay with the schedules of when city, city meetings are. And so we could give it a go and see, see if it works. So that's my suggestion. Comments? Councilor Lou.
I think that would be challenging for me between work schedules. And I mean, for any given one of us, there's always a constant juggle to schedule committee meetings or other community groups or other things like that. I have Mondays blocked off just always, and so I'm happy to stick with that. We could do a straw poll of just, you know, quick look around the room like who else would have trouble doing Wednesday, the third Wednesday?
We will do that.
And okay, we can do more discussion before the straw poll or we could just raise our hands. Either way.
No, I want to, I want to hear sort of the reasoning. That's why I'm raising it. Uh, Councilmember Burt?
So I agree that if the objective was to, or one of the key objectives was to allow us to be able to occasionally travel that last week of the month, that would be beneficial as somebody who's served a long time and occasionally would like that and rarely misses meetings, that would be attractive. But, you know, having two council meetings in a, in, in a week, I think is challenging. We also have the public that, that knows Mondays are the meetings. And, and trying to, to go through two packets in, in, you know, one week could be pretty overbearing. These are big packets as Councilmember Rectal mentioned, you know, by the time we get through the, studying the action items and loop back to look at the consent calendar, we're, we're pretty jammed up. It's, it's a lot of workload that we tend to do on the weekends more than during the week. And so I, I, I'm not inclined to go to this two meetings, the third week of the month.
Councilor Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the problem solving at work here. I tend to agree with Councilmember Lou that I would find middle of the week, Wednesday, back to back meetings, prepping my packet both for a Monday and for a Wednesday, just where to fit in the time for all that prep in one week. Every month I think would be challenging. I guess I would prefer to go the route of we do meet four Mondays a month. There's an occasional fifth Monday. I was just trying to take note of how many months have five Mondays in the, in the coming calendar year. Not enough. Yeah, so I'm willing to go along with it to try if that's obviously the, the direction of the group. But I would prefer that we get our work done on Monday nights if at all possible.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken already?
Yeah, okay, yeah. Oh. The short answer is I could make Wednesday work if people really wanted it. But I think I would have the preference to keep it on Monday just because same reason that George said. But it, especially if you, people want to travel, it's hard. Right? You want to go and, and visit relatives or whatever, there aren't a lot of opportunities. So that I would be, if that is a concern, I would be willing to do Wednesday. But for me personally, Mondays work better.
Councilor Stone.
I agree with Councilmember Rectal. I mean, I could, I can make it work. I don't have a really strong preference. I do think two in a week would be challenging, but I think overall, I, I wish we would look at that fourth Monday as really intended to be off unless accentuating circumstances and we really have to pack in another one. Cause I agree, I think just generally for the past several years, I, I, I'm shocked when we, when I see a Monday at the end of the month that we're not meeting. And I think it's beneficial for all of us to be able to have that, that time. I think it's important for staff too, to be able to play catch up. So I, I'd rather just us focus on really seeing what we can do to avoid that, that additional meeting.
Yeah, it's just in my two and a half years, it hasn't worked at all. So I wouldn't be too optimistic about that alternative. So that's what I was trying to work with. Somebody else, uh, uh, Councilmember Lou, I think was next.
Do we think it'd be feasible to just never, or to have alternating months where there is never a Monday meeting on, a fourth Monday meeting on an odd numbered month or something? Obviously, if there is literally some crisis, we could always convene a meeting, but what if we just canceled the calendar hole?
The reason that, I, I like the city manager to speak to this one as well. But the reason that we always have them is they come up maybe the previous week or two weeks out. So it's not like we can plan that four or five weeks in advance if we have spillover stuff or more work that comes along. So I don't know about that. Could, could we just get your opinion on that in the context here?
Sure, I, I would agree that these unfortunately do come up within a fairly tight window in advance of the meeting. You know, that said, also to the workload issue, since the mayor did mention this to me previously, that if we were to move it, say to the Wednesday, third Wednesday rather than the fourth Monday, we probably want to try to arrange or manage the agendas in a way that that Wednesday truly is a special meeting. And it's not a consent calendar in addition to an action item. So we'd really focus on a meaty item that just needs to be heard this month and to try to organize it in that way. But that said, you know, I appreciate the, the discussion. It, it sounds to me like one of our perhaps collective KPIs would be really to try to stick to three meetings a month as, as really the operating principle. And, and I'll, I'll need to confirm this, but I know we've, we've somewhat moved between how many substantive items a night we can have. I think it generally is three to four. I think it's a stretch to get four. And so if we could make that four more consistently, then I think that would help us cover your docket.
Uh, Councilor Baker? I'm not watching the lights right now. Are you next? I think so. Go ahead. Okay, great, great.
Yeah, thank you. So I would prefer to keep it to three if we can at all. And then the, the fourth, to the city manager's point, I think that was my reaction when you raised it to me was if we do this special meeting, how about we do dispense with special orders of the day? And, you know, city managers report and all of that, and just really try to hit it hard. Maybe get in and out of here in a couple of hours. Because there are time sensitive needs. I'm, I could go either way on the Wednesday versus Monday, but I did want to note that this Monday, we're having another special PNS meeting. So what's happening, I, I, I hadn't neglected to mention this earlier, but I'm glad we're talking about efficiency here because it's spilling over to our committees. Cause this is not the first time we've had two PNS meetings in a month this year. So it, it's taking up this Monday, even though the rest of you have it off. There are three of us who don't. But I, so I think this is, it's just, that's just to illustrate this is an important topic sort of across the board.
Councilmember Burt?
Yeah, I think part of the objective is to have some predictability on when we're not going to have a meeting on the fourth Monday. And I think that will be informed by this, looking at an annual schedule. And so we, I, I'd be very surprised if in May, we could avoid having a fourth Monday, for instance. And when we look at that schedule, there's going to be certain months that we go, that's not very likely, given the way things normally happen. Other months where it is much more likely. We've got this month where we're only having two meetings. So.
Well, that's very unusual, but yes, and I think it is a, a pattern.
Well, but I will say that the first month back is often light. Now, two meetings is unusual, but three in August, I don't think is so unusual. It's, my memory is it's, it's pretty darn light and we can, the data will help inform us on that. So anyway, I, I think that what we ought to do is look at whether we can have certain known fourth Mondays that we are agreeing we do not intend to have a meeting and unless there's an emergency, we won't change that. And then others we leave open as flex Mondays. And at least that gives us a little more latitude and, and visibility with, while still being realistic on needing to do the people's business. And if we got to do the business, we got to do the business.
Yep, absolutely. Uh, Councilmember Stone?
Thanks. I was just mad after the city manager kind of made the clarification about the Wednesday really being a special meeting and, and, and not doing all the other kind of form, formalities. That makes more sense to me because I, I do think we can get it done faster like the Vice Mayor said. But also liked Councilmember Lou's idea of the, maybe it's every other, every other month, the fourth month, that the fourth Monday is, is reserved as a potential special meeting. Otherwise we're not, we're not meeting. So I, I think either one of those I'd be, I'd be fine with.
Did I get?
I appreciated the clarification also. And I think if it was just an action item, it was none of the other stuff that's on a normal agenda, then my fears about the amount of prep needed diminish. And I think I could, you know, I'm, I'm someone who works from home. I, I don't travel for work anymore. And so I, I can definitely make it on a Wednesday night with less prep. Thank you.
Currently no more lights, so let's go to the city manager for input on this whole subject.
Well, again, appreciate the discussion. As it relates to the staff work, I think maybe just a couple of observations. You know, certainly in terms of how we organize the consent items, your staff reports, the presentations, the Q and A, we're, we're happy to take feedback, both on an ongoing basis or just a plug for, I think the city clerk is still with your packet every week, giving you a QR code to give feedback on the reports. And happy to receive the, through our one on ones as well. Because again, we want to be good partners in trying to ensure your meetings.
are as efficient as possible. The other is, again, I know it's been discussed, but specific to the consent items, we do our best to try to anticipate what can be routine and approve that way. And at the same time, we won't get it right all the time. So happy to get that feedback and make adjustments as the opportunity presents itself. If you can get those questions to us on Wednesday, that does really give us the ability to turn around responses for the public as well as for other council members. And at this point, I think we'll probably leave it at that.
Okay, anybody want to circle back on any other comments that were made? In terms of the one suggestion we just debated, I think what, what I'm hearing is that we try to, that we for now leave it on the fourth Monday, but only with an urgency look to it. And probably even with an urgency look, we would want to scrape out some of the items that would be, those unfortunately are not the ones that take the most time, but at least it's reducing some of the items. Is that a decent consensus, or do you want to take a straw vote? Okay, you want a straw? Okay, thumbs up, all right, thumbs up. Said, said Monday. So what I'm, 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 I'm going to, I'm going to resummarize. What I heard on the fourth meeting of the month, if necessary, is that we would prefer to stay on Mondays if necessary and have it shorter by reducing some of the items. There are other nuances, but that's, that's what I'm hearing. Okay?
I, I can, I can do either one. I'm abstaining. I don't, I'll, I'll support whatever the majority wants.
I think you need to do prefer Monday, prefer Wednesday, and either. Because I think you have some prefer Wednesdays.
Okay, I'll let you take that vote.
Well, I guess what's the straw? What's the straw for prefer Wednesdays? How's that? Right? Because you, you prefer Wednesdays, don't you?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm persuaded that it's not essential.
Okay, so maybe everybody's with either.
We're going to make this as long as possible.
Pick that up, okay. I think the travel piece was compelling. Some people are saying I really would like to be able to travel a little bit more than July and December holidays, and so for that reason, I've now been persuaded that Wednesday's better.
That's what you're saying, or that's what you're?
Yes. My vote has changed. Had you taken the straw poll 10 minutes ago, I was a Monday person, but now I'm in the Wednesday camp, and I wanted people to know why before the straw poll.
Plus one.
Okay, so that's really where I am, but I'm okay either way. And you two were Mondays. Monday, Monday, and you were Monday.
But I'm sorry, but Monday with trying to schedule in advance, which Mondays we definitely or almost certainly will not have a meeting.
But that won't happen 100% of the time, we know that, just so that.
Yeah. Very few things will.
That's my point. Okay. Any other comments on that? I hope this was helpful in 45 minutes.
We have to land.
I think we just did.
Yeah.
You see, we're getting tired, we're not being efficient.
I want Julie to sing Monday, Monday.
Okay, everybody, yes for Mondays preference. Oh wait, sorry. This is the most inefficient hour that we've ever had.
You need my? Okay, so that's two for Monday, we have.
I'm going back to Wednesday.
Okay, so for Monday, we have Councilmember Burt and Councilmember Lou, okay, vote for Wednesday. All right, that's Councilmember Stone, Lethard Hames, Vice Mayor Vinker, and Mayor Lowing.
I don't care.
And then Councilmember Rektall, Hames.
All right, well, this is not going to take an ordinance or an amendment to the Constitution, so we can give it a go, and if we don't, if we don't like it, we'll just, we'll just swap it back.
I think we'll look for your next available third Wednesday to see if that might work for the next, call it.
Special meeting.
No, instead, so it's the third Wednesday instead of the fourth Monday.
Right.
May I ask a question? The clerk's office does plan on an annual basis, the calendar for 2026. So is this unofficial vote with the intention of the clerk planning the year of council meetings ahead with Wednesday? And the only reason I mention that is because we do have holidays that fall on Mondays where we will need an additional meeting potentially scheduled. And we normally list that on the annual calendar.
Since that will be coming back to the council, perhaps we can game out both options for the council. We'll also need to look at the remainder of 25 to see where this might be applicable.
Yeah, with, with, with the contingency plan, that if it's not working out, we're going to switch it back. Okay, I hope this was helpful for the 45 minutes and if after reflecting on any of these other things, we want to bring them back up, just, just let me know, we'll figure out a time to schedule other stuff. But thanks for the evening, I'm, I'm really pleased that we pushed that last item in advance, otherwise we would just be starting it, but go ahead.
Correct. And just a reminder, we still have your consent calendar.
Yeah.
Your manager's comments.
And your report.
Close up from the link.
And just for the record, we have no request to speak, or hands are raised for study session, item five.
Okay, so I need a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Please take the roll.
Also noting for the record, no request to speak for consent calendar items, number six and eight through 15 with agenda item seven removed.
Correct.
Councilmember Rektall?
Yes.
Councilmember Lethard Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. And city manager comments?
Thank you, Mayor. City clerk, could I ask for your assistance? Make this very quick. Terrific, next slide, please. Oh, there we go. All right, do want to call to council and community attention that our San Antonio Road Area Plan work is about to hit the public phase with the first meeting of the Community Advisory Group set for tomorrow, that's the 19th, 5:30, 7:30 PM at Calvary Community Center, Room H1. And this will kick off the, again, public facing phase of this work. We anticipate this work will proceed over the next several months, noting also the October 23rd Community Workshop. And we also have an online survey that is launching to give people some options for providing input to the city and this planning effort. Next slide, please. I should note that our webpage, palalta.gov/SanAntonioAreaPlan. Then also, another engagement effort underway related to South Palo Alto crossings for bicycles and pedestrians of the Caltrain corridor. And that, once again, we have both community meeting and online survey scheduled. We have the community meeting coming up on September 9th at Mitchell Park Community Center, and the online survey is also now out, as you heard from a community member earlier tonight. And additional information on this project is palalta.gov/bikpedcrossings. Next slide, please. Then also, topic of some input this evening, the ongoing grade separation design work is proceeding. We have a rail committee meeting on September 16th scheduled, as well as community workshops coming up in September, or actually late September, and October 1st, September 30th, focused on the Churchill Avenue Crossing, and October 1st at Metal Drive and Charleston Road. All those meetings will be at Mitchell Park Community Center, 6:00 PM. And additional information will be coming back to the full council in November, palalta.gov/gradesseparation for further information. Next slide, please. Then, really eagerly anticipated by community members, this Thursday, I believe it is, the Enjoy Catalog registration opens up for residents. So for folks looking to enroll in classes and other activities, again, that's August 21st, this Thursday at 10:00 AM for residents, non-residents next week. And as always, our Enjoy Catalog is available online, as well as was delivered via US Mail to households. And that additional information is at palalta.gov/Enjoy. Next slide, please. Then finally, just looking forward to your upcoming items for the month of September. So next meeting is on September 8th. You have study sessions on the proposed development at 414 California Avenue, as well as a presentation from the San Francisco Que, Creek? Que, San Francis, Que, San Francisquito Creek, wow! Joint Powers Authority with our own Councilmember Aguirre Stone as Chair of the JPA, participating in that study session with JPA staff. We'll have your budget rec adjustments coming out of the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow, as well as consideration of urgency code changes related to energy reach codes. September 15th, the following week, study sessions on managing consulting services, as well as the return of the action item from tonight, zoning code amendment for de minimis exceptions. And finally, a Northern California Power Agency Battery Energy Storage Project recommendation. And then finally, on the 29th of September, noting no meeting on either September 1st or the 22nd, you'll have actually a somewhat lengthy closed session planned for your annual council-appointed officers evaluation, as well as study session on the South Palo Alto Rail Crossings for bicycles and pedestrians noted earlier. And that is your docket for the month of September. With that, I believe that completes my comments for this evening, Mayor, back to you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Next up, it says it's a break, so let's take one for a couple of weeks. We stand adjourned.